Roll.
Oh, no. And Johnny's taking Andy's spot. Yeah.
Tracy, we're good?
And I got my Trump pin.
Okay. Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to stand for the pledge. I'd like for Taiwan Giles to step up to the podium. Taiwan, thanks for being here today. Taiwan was a sergeant. Sergeant Taiwan Giles served in the United States Marine Corps with two tours of duty in Iraq, one in Afghanistan. He served with the Seventeen Alpha Company and Thirty-One Lima Company as an infantryman. His numerous medals include Combat Action Medal, Global War Terrorism Medal, and Global Service Medal, and he is also a deputy sheriff for Lackawanna County. Thank you for your service. The floor is yours. And thank you for being here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, would everyone please remain standing? I'd like to have a moment of silence for New York Police Officer Masoudas Familia, who was assassinated while on duty. May her thoughts and prayers be with her and her family and our law enforcement that is out protecting us 24/7, every day of the week, 365 days a year. They deserve the utmost respect, and they are our first line against terrorism. Please keep all of them's and our thoughts and our prayers. Just a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay. That's cool. I'd like to bring this Thursday, July 6, 2017 Board of Commissioners' meeting to order at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' conference room. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to table the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Proclamation presentation seventeen dash zero one nine four, Small Business Spotlight, Victoria's Gourmet Cafe Scranton. Commissioner Cummings?
Come on up to the podium. We have Victoria Lawrence from Victoria's Gourmet Cuisine in downtown Scranton. Tell us about your business and how you started.
We were located in West Side, and we just recently, seven months ago, moved into the PNC Bank Building downtown. And we're open for breakfast, lunch, and catering six days a week.
Wow.
And we're closed on Saturdays for catering, and so I can watch my son play football.
Nice. What made you get into this line of business?
I have a biology and chemistry degree, and somehow it just kind of ended up turning into that, so it's something I very much enjoy.
Oh, that's wonderful. That's very interesting. So you were a teacher, or you were going to be a teacher?
Actually, I was going to be a physical therapist.
Wow. And now you're...
And life took a turn and ended up doing this, so it really ended up being a true blessing.
And it's you and your husband, and I saw your son working there?
Yes, yes. Fifteen years old, and I'm able to kidnap him three times a week.
That's absolutely amazing. I mean, it's so nice to see a family business, and I know Scranton does appreciate the fact that you stayed there. You moved from West Side to Central City, but you stayed within the city limits. So the food I had, it was delicious. Very good food. So congratulations, you have a great establishment, and I'm really proud to have you here. Commissioner O'Malley?
Oteriani?
I have the pleasure of knowing this young lady for a while.
Nice.
Yeah. And she does do a great job. And I haven't been there since they've been in downtown yet, but my son and his grandfather were there last week, and he told me how great it was. And my son's a pretty good eater. He played football, too. So he was happy with it, so I'm sure I'll get there hopefully this week, but if not, next week.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
I just wanted to thank all three of you. This is such a complete honor. I'm completely humbled and truly very grateful. So thank you so much, really.
Victoria, first and foremost, thanks for coming in. Victoria's Gourmet Cuisine. Now you're on Main Street in West Side.
Yes.
Now you're in downtown Scranton.
Yes.
Okay, what's her address? How do people, how do we find you? If somebody wants to have lunch, where do we...
It's the first floor of the PNC Bank Building, so it's 201 Penn. And it's kind of a tough corner now, but you really can't miss it because the two huge generators are on the corner of our place. So that's actually how people are able to figure out that that's where we're at. They're kind of hiding our one side, but we're right inside the PNC Bank Building. We have beautiful blue umbrellas out front for outside seating.
It's noticeable. I've seen when I've gone down the street, I've seen what it looks like. It's absolutely...
Thank you so much.
What are your hours and what...
We're open every day, eight to four, except Saturdays. We're opened only for catering, so it's closed to the public.
Sure.
And that's only during the times that I'm not watching my son play football for prep.
Okay, phone number? If anybody, I'm sure you do takeout?
Absolutely. We do takeouts and catering, and we also deliver for free. And then we also have a fax list that we fax out our daily specials every day, and then people also fax in their orders.
I totally understand restaurant catering work. It's not easy whatsoever. You do every single job there is. You're every single title.
Chief Cook and Botto.
If somebody doesn't show up, you're the dishwasher.
Yes.
Somebody doesn't, you're the chef. It all depends on what's going on. Sometimes you're waitressing out on the floor. Sometimes you're probably sweeping up at the end and mopping the floors to get everything ready for the following day.
Yes. And now I can add snake wrangler because there was a snake in the kitchen.
Oh, dear God.
I can add that. After having a minor nervous breakdown, then I can add that to my list.
Well, Victoria, we're very happy that you're downtown Scranton. You're a great location, a Main Street in West Side, but I'm sure it's very happy for all of us to be filling another storefront in downtown Scranton. We really need the properties to be rented out. We think that, you know, downtown Scranton is on the verge of being as vibrant as possibly can be. There's a lot of young people living downtown. It's a place to be, and we're very glad that your restaurant is downtown, too.
Thank you so much, and we agree.
Thank you. Commissioner Cummings?
So everybody order from Victoria's today. Today's certificate of recognition, the County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Downtown Victoria's Gourmet Cuisine in honor of achieving the designation of a Small Business Spotlight in Lackawanna County. Given this sixth day of July 2017 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Oteriani, and myself, Commissioner Lorraine Cummings. Come on up.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Glad you're there.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Get down to look for lunch.
There we go. One, two, three. Two, three. One more, all smiles. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. There's anything I can do.
Yep.
Now, isn't that great? Another small business moved to downtown Scranton. Great job. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Okay. Resolution seventeen dash zero one nine three.
Thank you, Commissioner. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers 246,049 through 246,233 inclusive totaling $913,749.45, and electronic fund transfers including all payroll accounts totaling $4,602,867.36.
Everything's good? Does the board have any questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Seventeen dash zero one eight eight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, PIMA, for the Radiation Emergency Response Fund fiscal year 2017-2018 in the amount of $9,119. And here to address the Board of Commissioners is Dave Han, our Director of Emergency Services.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Ron, how are you?
Good. This is an annual grant that we receive from the state. It's the amount of grant is awarded based upon the amount of available funds in the Radiation Emergency Response Fund, which is the direct result of fees due to the Commonwealth from the three utilities who operate the five nuclear power plants within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania's amount is $9,000, or I'm sorry, Lackawanna County's amount is $9,119 this year. And the grant is to be used for equipment in the EOC, decon, team training, portable radios and ham radio systems, calibration of 42 radiation meters, which we own, and five portal monitors to use in event of an incident at the power plant near Berwick in case there was an evacuation. Lackawanna County, we are the support county for Luzerne County. So we, every two years, we conduct a drill with the nuclear, with the power plants, and we just, we do an evacuation of Luzerne County, and we bring them into Luzerne County. So the funding needs to be used only for that stuff, so, and we receive it every year. So this is just a basically renewal.
Every year.
Yeah, every year it's the same fund.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Han? I'd like to make a motion entering into a Radiation Emergency Response Grant Agreement. Do I have a second? Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Seventeen dash zero one eight nine.
Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award the Arts Engage for Program Year July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Arts Engage is a partnership between the County of Lackawanna Department of Health Services, Office of Youth and Family Services, and Lackawanna County Department of Arts and Culture in order to offer innovative programming for at-risk youth. Be it further resolved that the following applications are hereby awarded Arts Engage funding for the 2017-2018 year. Creative and Performing Arts Academy, $45,000. The Everheart Museum, $40,000. The Scranton Cultural Center, $32,500. And the United Neighborhood Center's $32,500. And here today to speak to the board is Maureen McWigan, Director of Arts and Culture.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Maureen.
Just quickly, this program's been in existence since 2008, so the goal of the program is that we place our children, they're public programs, but we also place our young people in Office of Family and Youth Services in them. We've had some really great success, so every year there's an RFP issued, and organizations can apply for up to $50,000, and it's reviewed by a panel in determining which ones will be awarded each year. So this is that list.
Does the board have any questions for Ms. McWigan?
I have a commentary.
You want to do it in the Commissioners', or you want to do it now?
I had the opportunity to sit and listen to the presentations with the group. I didn't vote, but I did see the process. Now, this is actually through children and youth, not you, right?
Right. Bill Browning's on away this week, so I manage the program, though. It's a partnership, so we do all of the collection of applications and review, but the funding does come from the Office of Family and Youth. Sorry, I should have said that. No, I'm sorry. This is not out of the Arts and Culture, but because we're set up to, that's what we do, we manage grant and RFP programs. We handle all of that side of it, but it's not funding from the Arts and Culture Department.
And I did have some recommendations and discussions on that, so I hope that that's going to continue before these programs are implemented, because I had some concerns.
Again, I didn't have the microphone on. How about me? Just so everybody, the viewing audience, if they didn't hear, I was just asking where the funding came from and just making sure that you knew it did not come from the Arts and Culture separate tax that's on our tax bill. It's actually coming from children and youth, correct?
Right, and it's budgeted for every year, so...
So again, I just want to make sure that we get these programs, because we don't really know what shows or anything that they're going to put on when we give them these grants. So I had asked the group if they can monitor those programs for, I'm trying to find the right words to say, for approval, I guess, to make sure that they're something that the community would actually support. So I'm hoping that we can get that accomplished prior to the shows going on, and we would know what they were, what their topics were going to be focused on. Thank you.
Okay, does the board have any other questions? I'd like to make a motion awarding the Arts Engage recipients. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Maureen. Seventeen dash zero one nine zero.
Thank you, Commissioner. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby grant the funding requests for the Department of Arts and Culture to the United Neighborhood Center's Camp Project Hope in the amount of $8,000, and the Lackawanna River Corridors Association's 30th Anniversary Programs in the amount of $5,000. And here again is Maureen McWigan, our Director of Arts and Culture.
Project Hope is a camp, as I think most people know, has been going on for many years, and they do take a lot of children from Lackawanna County, and they came to us several months ago and asked if they'd be able to accommodate more children and keep up their quality of program if they just had some additional funding. So that's what that first request is. And the Lackawanna River Corridors Association is a great, they're really responsible for the health and beauty of the river today, and they're turning 30 this year, so they're going to be doing a whole month of activities. So we felt that was a good project to fund since it'll be free and open to benefit the community.
The river's beautiful. Thirty years ago, I remember thirty years ago, all of us do. It was called the lackey. It was so dark and dingy and smelled horrible, and you had to hold your nose, and if you fell in it, you had to go to the doctor afterwards. It was scary. But I mean, the water's beautiful, the trout are there. There's so many events that go on along the river, our trails along the river, Sweeney Beach, we have canoeing. It's really great.
And this funding will provide more activities for the public throughout, I think, September and October. It's a month of activities celebrating the history and culture of the river.
And Project Hope, that's Mont Senior Kelly. I think he's a big part of that, isn't he now? I think Mont Senior Kelly is. Yeah. Project Hope, as a school director, we were growing up there for years. It helps a lot of the children that are needy to never have an opportunity to get out and actually see, get out to the country, swim in a lake, and just enjoy being, you know, like in a farm environment. It's really, really beautiful. It's really nice for the kids. Okay, does anybody have any questions?
No, I'd like to go with the Arts.
What, they're there every day.
A Project Hope?
Yeah, Project Hope is, it starts, it starts, it starts soon or something.
Yeah, it's the summer, and they bust the kids up.
Yeah, they're there every single day.
It's pretty long-term. It's like, yeah, it's a long-term program.
Absolutely. I think, Johnny, make sure that we get, that we get an opportunity for the Commissioners to go up, or at least Lorraine to go up and see Project Hope. I've been up there numerous times. I'd like to go up again, but they do a great work, and like you said, it's for all the children that are poor in the community, gives them an opportunity to really enjoy the country, enjoy all kinds of artworks, and, you know, they have nice, they have good meals, three meals a day, and it's really, it's very, very good.
I'll make sure we'll get on our agenda. Okay.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion granting arts and culture fund requests. Do I have a second?
Second. And just on the question, this comes from Arts and Culture Department.
Oh, my goodness. Why does that keep, why do I keep doing that? Sorry.
Yes, this funding comes out of Arts and Culture, the other, the other one doesn't.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Double yes. It's a great project. It really is. Okay, seventeen dash zero one nine one.
Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept a quote from Conex for annual maintenance and support of its core wireless network, Saragon radios, in the amount of $18,943.95. And here to address the board is Mike Brown from our IT department.
Mr. Brown, how are you, sir?
All right. This quote is part of an annual agreement that we have with Conex to actually, to service the core radios that are a part of our network for the wireless projects, so this way we can service the community better. So without this, it kind of puts us in a, in a bad spot.
Was there an RFP or anything put out, or what?
Since this was an active agreement from when we actually created this partnership with Conex back in, I believe, in 2010, it's been an ongoing agreement with us. So this is what we've been paying into for several years already.
I know we've been doing it forever. Okay, Commissioner Oteriani thing? From Mr. Brown? Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion accepting the, from Conex. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Seventeen dash zero one nine two.
Thank you, Commissioner. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a First Amendment to a lease agreement with Good Eye Properties at 1629 Pittston Avenue, Scranton, for the purpose of a district magistrate office, term to commence February the 1st, 2018, and expire on January 31, 2024, with a monthly rental of $2,300. Here to speak on it is myself. This is a, as you know, we're required to pay for the rents for the magistrate's offices throughout Lackawanna County. This is Magistrate Corbett's office. She's running for reelection this year. She's going to be elected for another, appears she'll be reelected for another six years as she's unopposed, I believe, in the election. This will run through her concurrent term coming up January of 2018. She was running, ended her term in 2024. We're just renewing it. I talked to her. She's happy with the premises. She's okay with the property down there, and she has no complaints or issues, so...
She's up for reelection?
This year, she's running, yeah.
Isn't that retention?
I'm sorry?
It's, it's on, but the microphone's on. I'm just talking lower. Sorry, Maureen.
Yeah, for retention.
She's up for retention. She's not up for reelection, right?
No, it's, somebody's running, yeah, somebody's running.
Only judges run for retention, yeah.
Is she the only one that's up?
No, no, the, there's Moscow is up, the magistrate in Pocono's up, and then the Lower Valley is also up this year, too.
And Valley is, too, I think, yeah.
The what?
Up Valley is, too.
Mid Valley also, Mid Valley also, yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into a First Amendment to a lease agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Seventeen dash zero one nine five.
Thank you, Commissioner. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a lease agreement with Hemingway Development Limited Partnership to accommodate the public to park motor vehicles on the lease areas in connection with concerts and other events occurring on Montage Mountain and other county affiliated entities during the term of the lease, to commence on July 1, 2017, and terminate on October 31, 2022. The Chief of Staff is hereby authorized to execute the lease agreement on behalf of the county, and the lease agreement is subject to review and final approval by the county solicitor. Here to speak on it again is myself. This, as you know, there's been continuing problems with parking up at Montage Mountain for concerts and other events that are scheduled up there. The county has approached Hemingway Development, which owns a lot up there, Lot 16, that is going to accommodate, could accommodate up to 2,500 vehicles. So we're entering into a five-year lease with Mr. McDonough and Hemingway Development for that property for the next five years, which is the term of the contract with Live Nation, and we hope that will alleviate the parking issue up at Montage, especially for larger concerts, Camp Bisco, Peach Fest, and Luke Bryant. Usually, we have overflow crowds for those.
I have a question for the Commissioners. The rental is his cost to grade the property, and he has indicated if it's less than 50, he'll return the difference. He's not really looking for anything, but in order to park cars there, he's got to grade the lot. So the sole rental he's going to get is the cost for him to grade the lots, and the lease is going to have a provision, if it's sold, should be prorated back to the county.
Correct.
And in addition to that, Live Nation has agreed to pay the county a fee for all cars parked there, so hopefully the county will reimburse whatever costs it incurred to grade the land.
Does the board have any questions? I'd just like to thank our administration for the last year and a half. We've worked with Live Nations, and I think we've, it's become more of a partnership than it was in the past. It was adversarial at one point, and I just think that, you know, we need to provide, we need to provide more parking, and it's going to make easier access for any of our concertgoers. Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering to a lease agreement with Hemingway Partnership. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board.
My name is Rose Marie Jaeger, and I am a lifelong citizen of this city, this county, along with my husband, and I'm having a problem with the very unpopular...
Ms. Jaeger, just your address, too.
110 Tracy Lane.
Thanks.
In Scranton. The very unpopular subject, call a reassessment an assessment. I'm not here to talk about the reassessment. That's a whole other thing. But we just built one of the few new houses in this city, and when they assessed, well, first of all, they didn't know the house was there until I called, looking for a tax bill, and everybody got nervous and ran out. The assessor came out, there was snow on the ground, he pulled in the driveway, looked at the house, didn't measure, didn't do anything. Then I get this bill, and the house is assessed at like way more than the houses at Lake Scranton Estates that have five-car garages, pools, pool houses, everything. So I have to pay the $35. I go down to the assessment. You got to take all the work for them. You got to do all their work for them. They look at you, they tell you, they don't want to tell you their names or anything. Well, anyway, they lowered it $2,000. I'm still paying $13,000 more. My house is assessed for $13,000 more. So I guess what I want to know, and you can't get anything out of those people over there, is, is the information, how they assess a property, available to the public? And if so, how do I get my hands on it? Because there is something very wrong, what's going on in this city. Our county.
We actually have Mr. Foley here. They could probably explain. Mr. Foley, would you like to come up to the podium? Just Habs, he's here.
Good.
Well, whereby Purdon's Law required to do is establish a base as to how we arrive at a assessed value. What we do is we get billing permits from the city of Scranton, in your case. That has an established value. We take the square footage. We usually review the builder's plans, which they must place out in front of the construction site. So we have the square footage, bedrooms, et cetera. From that point, we go back. We use Marshall and Swift, which is a nationwide valuation manual service. We take that by the square footage. We take that, by the square footage. We take it by the various elements of there, and we come up with the final number. We then put on what they call a step rate, which is, right now, is .15. So let's assume if your house was a $200,000 cost of construction, when we come up with that $200,000 figure, we apply the step rate of .15, and we would come out with an assessed value of $30,000. Now, that's by Purdon's Law. At that point, you have the right to appeal that.
Which I have to pay for.
Yes.
Which is, that's, that's an absolute crock. That $35, I might as well light a match to it.
Okay. Well, you have the right to appeal. You are notified then what the assessed value is, and you come in. There's a board appointed by the commissioners. There's a three-member board. They would hear your case, and they would make a decision. Their case is, or, once they make that decision, it's really not open before general knowledge. And again, Purdon's Law says they are not obligated to give a reason as to why they arrived at it or anything else. I don't make the law. That's Pennsylvania law. And I think Frederickson or Mr. Brazil would answer that. Am I correct, so far?
That's terrible. That's like sticking your hand right in my pocket. That is terrible.
I understand what you're saying.
I just need somebody to explain to me how a house up at Lake Scranton Estates that has a mother-in-law's apartment, I've been in the house. It has a five-car garage. It has a separate two-car garage. It has a pool. It has a pool house, probably twice the size of this room, is assessed at $30,000, and mine is at 42,400. I have a one-story house that is nowhere near that.
Well, the only thing I can say is that if you went before the board, which I believe you did.
Yes, I did.
And the board gave their decision, you then have the right to take it to court.
And I gotta give you another $165.
Well, that, again, is a filing fee that the court charges.
I mean, that's ridiculous. When is the county going to learn? The people in the county learned that you work for us, the taxpayer.
Well, I well understand that.
Well, not everybody in your county does.
Okay. I just wanted to just give you a brief summary. You could speak from after.
Can I get that in writing?
It's on, it's on TV. It's, it's recorded.
No, no, not that. I want the formula.
Oh, no, he could do the formula, absolutely.
The whole thing? Can you send it to me?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, no, but give me your address and everything else for reference.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Ma'am, also, that, that house that you're talking about may have came, come in and gotten their taxes lowered.
I don't care if they got it lowered. The places like a mansion.
Well, hang on a second.
It's all brick.
Hang on, calm down. I'm just telling you that that home might have, can't come in and gotten their taxes lowered on appeal. They might have appealed every year, and that's why there's this problem. If you let me continue, that's why there's this problem where some boroughs are not collecting enough taxes, because people are coming in and doing neighborhoods and lowering the, they're doing an appeal on it.
Well, I guess now's the time to ask. Why is there a $35 fee?
Well, we have to, it should be, I mean, honestly, there should be more. What do we pay for an appeal? What do we go, what do we pay? But what do we pay as a county? What does the taxpayer actually pay someone?
Three-member board that comes in for every one of these plus.
We're paying their salaries. I mean, we have to pay them to work. It's not as though it's, it's something that people do for free.
Yeah, but I do all, I had to do all the work. I had to go out, take the pictures. I had to do this. I had to do that. I had to do this. They do nothing.
But some people hire attorneys to do that. Some people don't even know that they can do what you did, which, which is a shame, because they, they end up paying a couple hundred dollars for.
There's a lot of shame in this county attached to this assessment bit. There is a lot.
There's a couple hundred, they might pay a couple hundred for an attorney. I don't know how much, do you know how much it would?
Five hundred.
Four or 500?
And I'm not objective, I just don't understand where the equality is. I really don't.
There's no equality in, in taxes. There's none.
Well, that's a shame, and how come nobody's doing anything about it?
Well, how are you gonna make it fair or equal?
That's your problem. You were elected to straighten the problems out, not me.
No, no, that's, that's just the way that, that people see properties. It's not my problem. It's the way people actually assess something. It's never going to be equal. You want everybody, I mean, we could make a law and say, okay, everybody in the county is going to pay the same amount regardless of your house. Do you want us to do that? You want me to make, I'll do that right now. I'll make a motion right now and do that. Everybody in the county pay the same amount. There, it's fair. Shall I do that? There we go. That'll solve the whole damn problem. Would you all vote for that?
No.
No, but that's fair.
That's not fair.
Why, isn't it fair? Let's have the discussion. No, this is an important discussion.
That is not fair.
Well, then, what's fair?
What is fair, the value of the house, regardless of where it is, or, excuse me, or who it belongs to, or who you know or who you don't know, is how your house should be taxed.
Who you know shouldn't have anything to do with how you tax.
Oh, well, look at where you live. I mean, come on.
Well, man, I wouldn't do that, and I wouldn't allow that, but that has, that should have nothing to do with anything. And if it does.
Well, then you are very naive.
Then you guys need to be.
Stop, 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 stop. The decorum of the meeting is this. You come in, excuse me, ma'am, you ask the questions. We brought Mr. Foley up to explain some of it. You're going to get your information afterwards. The commissioner, if she would like to say something back, will speak to you under Commissioners' Business. Okay, next up, Joan. Thanks for coming in.
Now, I know how he felt. Maurice Schumacher, 1799 East Mountain Road. It'd be so tempting to follow up with my comments on reassessment, but something of more importance is questioning, I'm questioning. Did you people ever, with respect to what's happening with the outside and correcting all the errors, did you ever change any of those to, or go over that list and approve it?
Well, we'll answer that after Under Commissioners' Business, because we're not supposed to be talking at this point.
Okay, because just, let me tell you, if, I mean, what my, what my issue is. Jesus Christ quote, "This is my command," wait, no, no, "greater love has no man than this, that he lay down his one's life for his friends." It's out there. It's in stone. If somebody can prove that this is not accurate, or that this was spoken before and he plagiarized it, then I would say it would be okay to change the contribution. But I understand from the materials that were provided that the current thing, if you didn't change anything, was to go from anonymous to author unknown. That's an outright lie. And I really, I mean, he not only said it, should be, it should be attributed to him, he actually did it for every one of us that is willing to accept what he offered. And I, as a, as a Christian, really would be very offended if you decide to allow it to go forward with an author unknown or anonymous. It is Jesus Christ. If you don't want to do that, if Christians are that out of favor, then take the whole thing off. Do not leave it on there, but don't do it incorrectly, please.
We have an RFP out for that right now. We approve that to see what corrections. We approve, we approve for them to do the RFP.
Now, on to reassessment. I would call the action that you proposed, I guess, at the end of the last meeting, I had to leave, to be initiative or a referendum. And it's my understanding that measures referred to the ballot must be done by the Pennsylvania State Legislature. Am I incorrect?
Johnny.
Lackawanna County is a home rule, a home rule county and has the right to adopt its own provisions, and we do have a provision on referendum and initiative. In addition to that, the county, prior to the Chief of Staff presenting his review of reassessment and looking at alternatives, did in fact get an opinion from an attorney who specializes in reassessment, and her opinion was based upon the status as a home rule county that Lackawanna County had the right to place this measure on the ballot.
Andy spoke with Attorney Joan Price out of Philadelphia. Attorney Price issued a, a letter to, to Mr. Wallace dated May 26, 2017. The pertinent part of it reads, "I researched whether the commissioners have the referendum power to place a question on the ballot on their own initiative without amending their home rule charter. My professional opinion is that they do have this authority, as long as they view the referendum as a mandate in carrying out their legislative duties under the consolidation of referendum as a mandate in county case assessment law, specifically Title 53, Section 8842, subsection A. This referendum may not be simply advisory. It must be a binding referendum to carry out the commissioner's obligations under the assessment law."
Okay. That raises my blood pressure even more, because the, what's come from this podium has been anti, and it's been anti for, stacked against people for, well, ever since Mr. Cordero and Munchak started, because 20th Century, 21st Century came in and told everybody, oh, relax, relax, it will only be, it'll be a one-third, one-third, one-third. One-third will stay the same, one-third will be lowered, and one-third will be raised. Well, guess what that did for those who were raised? Any, took any support away. What person in their right mind, other than who was fair-minded, would say, oh, yeah, I wasn't, I'm, mine's the same, or mine's lawyer, lower, so I'm not going to come out and speak against it, even if I believe that it was, the assessment was wrong. But the purpose of the assessment is strictly for taxation. So you are going to ask everybody, including nonprofits, people who work for the nonprofits, all the renters, who probably don't give a, whatever, anyway, and they're gonna, they're gonna vote on something that really doesn't affect them directly, but it certainly will affect the ratepayers. Now, you also have to admit, I don't, I could sit down with each of you or all of you and go over, I believe I shared with you once before that I logged every single transaction that was in the Times for a little bit over one year, from, I believe it was March of 16 through March 17. I got every pin, I've got the assessment, and I've got the market value. And, you know, last night, I actually thought what would be a good thing is to do a log, and I started off, you know, between under, under the 6.9 that was current. Now it's dropped down again. The CLR has dropped down for this year. But I was going to categorize them and show you what it does to the city of Scranton, where the city of Scranton stands and where the rest of the county stands. And I got so depressed after I did the first month that I just thought, no, I'm not going to sleep tonight. We got humidity. I've got my allergies. I don't need this, too. But let me just share with you what I did. First of all, I think I grabbed the wrong page on one of them. Yeah, here we go. All other, this was those who had a, an actual, if you want to say, an actual market to assessment ratio. And if it was over 20, I counted it. And the total that I counted during that period was, and this is only a start, but I, because I logged them in, I know what happens in the future. It's sort of like reading the last chapter of a book, and it doesn't get any better. So, well, this is not accurate, and someday I may go back and do that, but of the 218 properties that were over 20, that is, they, their actual market value was 20 times, or was over 20 for the CRL and the 6.9. So they are paying taxes on a home that is valued far less by the assessment. Now, guess how many of those 218 were in the city of Scranton? 34. That's right. That's how bad things are in, in Scranton, unfortunately. I think, nope, I did bring you the right, correct one. I also did those that were under, at the CRL or under the CLR, and the total was 94. And Scranton, there we improved, 41. 44% of the properties that sell, it is now up to, I know it's up to over 48 the last time, because when I stopped doing this, logging every single property, I continued to log just those in Scranton, and so I know what we're doing there. We're about 48% of the properties that transfer in the city of Scranton are under the CLR. Now, if that doesn't tell you that it's wrong, then I suggest you get the figures from now of those people who are appealing. And Ms. Cummings, you already said it yourself. A lot of people don't know. A lot of people that know about it don't know how to go about it, or they don't want to hire a lawyer to, to do that in case they lose. So you have to admit that it is, the property values are not correct. And for you to not take that responsibility and to cause us to, we taxpayers, and I think if there's, I'll be honest, if there was a reassessment, I believe my taxes would probably go up. But I don't think it's right. We have so many people that are being overcharged and undercharged, and I'm going to send each of you something that came out of when Redding did theirs, I think, about five years ago. But I think what you're doing, or what you're proposing doing, is wrong. And further, at the next, oh, I'll go, move on for just a second to something else. Are we ever going to go back to the schedule that was announced early on, that the meetings would be the second and the fourth Wednesday?
No, we had a conflict. We, I'll answer it afterwards.
Okay, but that, because I, I will try to get it done. What we're, what we're doing and spending millions of dollars, I think, is crazy. I think we can modernize, because it's based on market value, not on the looks of the house or the property. We can go digital, and I have, I have the databases that I think would be pertinent, and I will do a write-up and try to bring it to, to the next meeting. So I think you need to really rethink this one, because I think you're going down the wrong route, and I don't think you're being fair to those of us who support you with our Okay, now, the next item is, could we have an update on the status of the sale of this building? Did you have to call the riot police out to control the crowd that came to look through this building? How many came? Can you answer that in?
We'll talk after Under Commissioners' Business.
Okay. And I call, do we have any update on the status of our mosquitoes up on East Mountain? I did try to call Mike Chissock and, to see if they had the results of the expanded study, but his phone, I don't know what it is, but it said, the machine, after many rings, it came on and it said, the machine is off. So I don't know where you go from there.
You called, called the Parks and Recreation Department themselves. 963-6764, Bill Davis. 6764.
And still ask for Mike Chissock, or?
I'm just saying, like, if you're unable to get ahold of them, they could find, they could find Mr. Chissock. There's a problem with his phone.
And then, again, I would like, I would like to know, how many smoke breaks are allowed per employee in the union contract? Okay, well, you'll, I assume, since you don't have dialogue. And then I would also like to know the cost per, per Project Hope camper or participant that is from Lackawanna County? And isn't the controller usually here to verify that the invoices were?
Right here. He's in the hallway.
He's in the hallway, and she's here.
You didn't, you didn't ask her, or you did, and she just?
She did, she looked up, but I, yeah, she did, she did confirm it.
Okay. And then, again, on the next meeting, I'd like to know when you're going back to the second and fourth.
Sure.
Okay. Oh, no, I'm sorry, there is one more. Do you ever get the information on the results of the charitable organizations? Do you get any information from them?
In regards to?
Yeah, to what?
Well, in regards to what they file, because they have to essentially do the hub test, and I would like to know, actually, I would like to ask the, the county to go out and ask every organization that is not taxed to verify that they are entitled to non-property tax. You know, that's also a big issue in, in the city of Scranton with so many, I mean, we do get some benefits, certainly, but we also lose a lot of property taxes, which have to be upheld by the rest of us. And when, at one point, it was 33, I don't know what the current rate is, John would probably, could probably say, but they do get, they are required to file with this office of, or Bureau of Charitable Organizations on an annual basis, and you might be able to get some pertinent information from them that you could share with us. Thank you.
Thanks, Marie. Sorry.
Anyone else? Okay, Commissioner Cummings?
Thought it was going to be short me. Okay. Mrs. Jaeger?
Yes.
I appreciate that you came in and let us know about your, your problem with your property, and I hope that you got the answers you were looking for. If not, I, I'm sure that John would be happy to give you more. In regards to fairness on taxing, once reassessment is done, people can come in and appeal yet again, so then it starts the process all over again. So taxation is never fair in regards to property taxes. I have been lobbying for House Bill and Senate Bill 76 to get passed since before, well, four years ago. It will only get rid of the school property taxes, and that's only if they've paid up all their debt. So there's still going to be some taxation at the property tax level. Are you, can you not hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, no, I was looking at Marie. She, she just said something. So, but it will be at least lower, and at that point, there may be something that I would be in favor of in regards to reassessment if property taxes were gone. However, I'm responding to your questions. I apologize. But you can come and talk to me anytime. I, I mean, you could even stay after the meeting and talk to me.
I really don't, when we should be able to get these answers from the office over there.
Well, I, I hope you do. And, and John, you can make an appointment with John, and, and he'll go over it again. But that's just my, my opinion. It's, it's never going to be fair, regardless of what happens. I think that was the only thing you had. On the legality issue, thank you. I was wondering, can we post that response from Joan Price? Because I did get some calls regarding the legality of the referendum, and also on the home rule charter, that it states that it's up to the people, so maybe we can get some clarification on our home rule charter as well, and I would appreciate that.
Certainly, Commissioner. And the commissioners have done referendums, different boards of commissioners have done different referendums over the last couple decades, I'm pretty sure, too, right?
I'm not sure, Commissioner. I have to check with Marion on that. I'm, you know, going back, I'm not sure.
Yeah, see what the history is.
That was.
Yeah, when they were going to solidate the row officers, yeah, yeah, that was recent.
Charter, yeah.[1774.52] Yeah.
Yeah, the question was brought up to me, and saying that the commissioners had no authority to put a referendum on the ballot, which I, I know I've read it as well, but please confirm that for us, I'd appreciate it. As for?
Commissioner, we believe, that may actually already be online, I believe it was posted.
It is, but, but in reading it, they brought five points in, in regards to it on the Home Rule Charter.
I mean, I think the letter is, is it online, Tracy, you said the letter may already be posted online?
Oh, that one? From, what's her name, Joan Price?
Joan Price, yes, correct.
So, to the viewing audience, if you're looking for confirmation on that, the letter is online, and it's Joan Price that has written the legal opinion. Regarding assessment, I've never been for reassessment. I mean, I've, I've made no, you know, I've never stated I was for reassessment. And for the very reason that I feel that taxation is not fair to begin with, and, you know, it has nothing to do with me hating government, it has everything to do with the fact that I'm a homeowner, I'm a single mom of four kids, I've struggled in life, just like most people in our, our area have. And, you know, I saw firsthand how unfair it was. I mean, I bought two houses next to each other, I owned a home, and then I bought the one next door, and I saw the difference in taxes. But that's when I found the difference in taxes. I didn't, when I bought my house, this was something that was the misunderstanding by the times yet again, where they claimed that I didn't look at taxes as an issue. That's, that's not true. I chose to live in Old Forge because the taxes are low there, because the school district is small, and I would never, I better not say that, let me just leave it at that. I chose to live in Old Forge because of the low tax. Yes, I do look at the fact that taxes are high in certain areas, and I wouldn't move there for that reason. What I did not do is look across the street at the addresses and go and look up their taxes and how much they're paying as compared to what I would be paying. And I hardly doubt that one person ever did that unless they were in real estate. So, if there was a person out there that looked across the street, now, Ms. Jaeger came in, she found out after the fact as well, I don't think that you were looking at everybody else's taxes to see.
I did, before we built there, I absolutely did.
And it does?
And when I got something $15,000 higher assessed, that's what set me off.
Well, I guess if you were building, you might look at that.
Yeah.
I didn't look at it in purchasing a home, no, I didn't look across the street to see what my neighbors were paying. No way. And, and I can't imagine somebody else would. I just don't understand that. I, I don't, I wouldn't do that. And, and if you're that concerned about taxes, why would you purchase a home to begin with? I mean, you're going to go, they're going to go up, they're eventually going to go up. But reassessment isn't going to just be a one-time thing, once completed. They want it done every couple of years thereafter. So, that means every one to two years, you'd be looking at a difference in tax price. Talk about people not wanting to come to our area with some, something like that, and the instability of not knowing where your taxes are going to be in one to two years, that would make me not want to move to an area. It would, if it's so completely, if you're unsure of what your taxes are going to go up, down, where they're going to be at every one to two years, I would never want to move to a county that did that every one to two years. I, no way. Now, then, I would be definitely concerned about what, what the taxes were going to move at. And the other thing is, is if you're going to have an assessment every couple of years afterwards, why would anybody update their houses? I mean, it's just like this permit process that they have. You see it all the time, where they have to go and get a permit, and the complaints I got this weekend on the phone, because I did get phone calls on, on reassessment, and they were saying how some of these bids are bid at the municipality level, lower than the actual cost they're going to be to try and save the money. And then, when the assessor comes out, it looks completely different than what they had expected because the permit was incorrect. Well, that's what happens when you have an unfair tax system. I mean, that's just, people are trying to save money, they're hurting out there. People are losing their houses left and right in this area. The last thing they need is a tax increase, and that's why I would be against it. And I just am not in favor of tax increases, I'm just not. Nobody in this area can afford them right now, we have too many people losing their homes. And I'm just not going to ever be in favor of it. And you could shake your head all you want, but the simple fact of the matter is, is that go look at all the people that have lost their homes in the past four years, five years. We have a thousand, over a thousand people on our repository list, still, to this day. And it's just not right. I just don't agree with that. So, I'm not going to change my mind on reassessment, I don't agree with it, I just don't, unless there's a substantial decrease in taxes somewhere along the line, like a property tax removal with the House Bill and Senate Bill 76. As for the meeting times, they were changed because there's so many things going on. I mean, there's so many meetings that were going to, that were conflicting. We have Harrisburg, Washington, we have a lot of things going on with the budget in Harrisburg, it's still not actually done, and I know that there was scheduling with vacations as well, so, sorry about that. But I think they'll get back on track, and I'm sure Commissioner O'Malley will address that. I do agree with Marie on modernizing the projects, like Commissioner Notterianni was talking about updating our, our computer systems, or GIS, or whatever programs are out there to help with assessments. I think that's a great idea. But I think we've done a lot of that already, haven't we?
Working on it.
So, you know, I mean, that's going to be, that's, yeah, that's going to be updated, and it's going to be more, more efficient. And that's about all you can really ask for, I think, is to make sure that everything is more efficient when you're utilizing the, your assessments in your assessor's office. Status of the sale of the building, I would like to know an answer to that, too, because I'm really not sure on that one. I don't know how many people came in to look at it. And I'm, if you can't get an answer on the mosquitoes, Marie, let me know, and I'll look into it more. How many smoke breaks in the union? I think Tracy said there was two when she was sitting here.
Two fifteen minutes.
Two fifteen minute? Okay. And the cost of the Project Hope for Lackaw, did you just mean for Lackawanna County?
That's what I said.
Okay. I'll look, I'll look up. I don't, I don't know, just for the kids from here.
Pro-resident?
Pro-resident?
Is that how you time, per child?
Per child from Lackawanna County.
Per participant.
Per participant.
I don't know.
Well, you give $8,000, so it's just a, it's a blanket.
Depends on how many they accept, I guess, how many.
Yeah, I'm not sure how many, because I think they accept as many as they possibly can. Sometimes it's a real large camp, sometimes it's less.
Yeah, I wasn't there for that meeting, I was there for the other grant that they had, I sat in on those meetings when they were doing the grants to UNC. So, is Maureen still here, or no? Okay. I'll, I'll find out, though, I'll find out what it is, cost per child. Okay. And as far as the charitable organizations are concerned, I mean, it's all colleges, right? Is that the only, I don't know what forms that they fill out.
Well, there's hospitals, churches, there's a lot of things that actually fall under that.
I know with the churches in Scranton, I know Bob Bullis was in here, and he said that when he purchased a church, they're no longer allowed to keep them nonprofit after the, after the purchase of church. So, God, how many churches have gone under, I don't even know. Hundreds, a lot, I just know a lot. So, that would be interesting to find out. So, I don't know who would help us with that, maybe John, or would John Foley know that information? Could you get some answers on that for me, John, and then I'll talk about it next meeting?
I can research and see what we can find out, but there's no question, when a church or the diocese or, when a church sells the property, we can put it on a taxable basis. And then, it's up, sometimes it's sold to another denominational church, which they apply immediately to keep an exempt status. They must submit their 501(c)(3), their documentation, and then the Board of Assessment Appeals will look before them, and then they make the decision as to whether they would be exempt or taxable.
I think what Marie was actually?
As far as the number?
Yeah, that's a.
Taxable, or churches that have been.
Well, not just churches, no, every, I mean, right now, anything that's a 501(c)(3) is automatically pretty much given, but not, no property tax.
Correct.
Yes. And that is not, that is not good. That is not good, especially for the city of Scranton.
Well, I.
You can, I mean, people do set up foundations.
Yes.
And, and they get them, they buy all these properties, and they don't pay taxes on them, and then they sell them for, you know, it's, yeah, they, so they get a double tax break. They get the tax break for contributing to their foundation, and then they, and they have control of which they have control.
Well, you can have that discussion with.
You talk to Mr. Foley afterwards.
I mean, I'll get the information if we can, but.
We should do a survey of all of them, first, like, on the HUB test, yeah.
HUB test, okay. Well, thanks for bringing that to my attention, I mean, I'll do what I can on that. So, thanks, John. I want to, before I forget, Commissioner O'Malley just put this in front of me, and yes, this is very important. July 16th, at the Courthouse Square, we're going to have our addiction awareness rally, and it's, Forever Sammy Foundation is going to be sponsoring that, along with Lackawanna County and numerous sponsors at this point. So, if you can attend, that'd be great. Don't forget, what time is it starting? Three, three o'clock to seven o'clock.
Three to seven.
So, please come out and help sponsor, or help make everyone aware of the problem that we have, although I think everyone does know. But there'll be a lot of different places here that'll help make, help you understand where you can get treatment, and give you some information on how you can know if someone in your family is actually affected by this, that you might not even have an idea of. So, it was an excellent program last year, it was well attended, was there almost 300 people, I think, if not?
A lot, it was packed.
It was, it was jam-packed. So, I'm hoping that everyone will come out and support Sammy Heenanhan's family. I mean, this is the girl that her parents put in the paper that she passed away from a heroin addiction and overdose. So, you know, they're, they're very passionate, and they want to make sure that they're helping the community in their, and that's how they're going to pay it forward over losing their own daughter. So, they're very wonderful people, and I would hope that you can all attend. As for, I don't think there's anybody I missed on commentary, but as for my commentary, I would really love it if the Scranton City Council members would have the guts to come in here and have a conversation with this commissioner, rather than going out to the public and commenting on things that they are, they're, they're the ones with the misinformation. They read quotes in the paper and take them verbatim when they're actually not. And I will, if I have to, bring the tape recorder with me and the handwritten notes from my commentary to Scranton City Council to correct them, and maybe that will stop them from continuing the barrage of nonsense that comes from those meetings against this commissioner. You know, I mean, I don't know, maybe they're going to run for commissioner or something that they're doing, who knows? All I know is, it's absolutely ridiculous at this point. Scranton City Council has absolutely no room to complain about this commission, or the county whatsoever. We've been doing our jobs, okay? We're not bankrupt up here, all right? When we were having a hard time, the commissioners, to their credit, did exactly what they had to do, and regardless of whether Democrats or Republicans were involved, they did it and got us to this point, and I appreciate that. And the three of us up here are continuing that work, and we're doing a damn good job of it. And Scranton City Council has a lot of nerve to talk about anyone in regards to anything, because they need to get their own house in order before they start throwing stones at this commissioner. And like I said, it must be really nice to be able to sit down there and be on TV and throw rocks at someone that they don't even know, that they have no guts to come and talk to, and let alone is a female. Maybe that's why they won't come up here and talk to me. I don't know. But you know what? I wish they would, because I'm really tired of getting phone calls at 9:30 at night after their meetings from people that were there trying to let me know what's happening. And, and I get calls from the Scranton Times as well. And, you know, if they're going to do that, at least give me a heads up, which I might as well just get used to it. Every Thursday night, I might as well just wait by my phone for people to start calling me because of some derogatory comments made by the three, or the two fellas down there in the Scranton City Council. You know, it's, it's ridiculous at this point. I don't understand why they have the, what their point is even making, even discussing it. If they want to talk about reassessment, fine. And if they disagree with something I said, fine. But don't spew, you know, they talk about how, all this hatred out there in our, in our world today. Well, just look at the Scranton City Council meetings to find out where it comes from. It's a disgrace. Grow up already. If they have something to say, come up here and say it to me. It's, it's, I've never seen them at this podium, not once. Not once. And trust me, it's not a political anything, because I think one's a Republican, one's a Democrat. So, it has nothing to do with politics. So, I guess it has to do with gender, I don't know. What else could it have to do with? Because they don't knock you two. Not that, do they?
Yeah.
Well, no, no, actually, I mean, my name is mentioned down at that Scranton City Council more times in the past four weeks, and, and I'm not the only one sitting up here. So, I wonder, you know, I mean, you know, maybe you'd go down and they'd be deathly afraid of you because you'd go and knock their block off or something. But you know what? They, they don't, they don't have any problems sitting there talking about Lorraine Cummings. Well, next time, come on up here and talk to me, because, you know, I mean, I'm just, I have no problem talking about issues. But, you know, you don't sit down there as a, you're supposed to be professional, and they're talking about, you know, ridiculous things like, well, they laugh, they sit there and make snide remarks. That's just childish. What's wrong with those people? You guys are from Scranton.
I've never watched, to tell you, Commissioner, I've never seen a council meeting.
It's, it's absolutely ridiculous. If they disagree with an issue, fine, I have absolutely no problem with a valid debate. But just because they disagree doesn't mean I'm wrong. Period. So, come on up here and have a discussion with me, guys, because I'm not afraid of you, so come on down. Thank you, everyone.
Commissioner Notterianni?
I'll keep my remarks brief, but I really have never watched a council meeting. I saw part of one a long time ago. I give Commissioner Cummings credit for having a position on the reassessment. She's against it, and I'm for it. I think sometimes she thinks differently about what it would do than what I think. I think fairness is the bottom-line key, and she doesn't agree with that, but that's the key. As far as the appeals board, that is part of the problem. People can come in and do that. But that is something that can be remedied even better than it has been by the, the training and the people that we put on that board. And the, the modern technology that is available now makes it that much more difficult for anyone to have their property taxes either lowered by appealing it, because there are specific guidelines to follow. Those programs, that one, that one company that we hired, Pictometry, that makes it that much more difficult for them to do. This is the guidelines. The company that comes in, and again, it's only, in Pennsylvania, there's really only one that can do it properly, because we aren't required by, by law in Pennsylvania to reassess. So, in others, most states, they are required to do it on a regular basis. So, there are six, or seven, or eight, or 10 companies that do it that are competitive. In Pennsylvania, that's not the case, because we aren't required to. That, as far as it not being fair, again, the next day, and people being to continue to do that, it, the way things are now would be much more difficult for that to happen. So, once it's done once, it would be much more difficult for them to be able to come in and ask for a reassess, to have their taxes reassessed or appealed. That's, that, that world has changed. We've been doing the same thing for 50 years. People losing their houses is a travesty, there's no question about it, but we've been doing the same thing for 50 years. And these are, this is what is happening, okay? To do the same thing over and over repeatedly and expect different results, I think they say that's something for insanity, would that be the word, John? Yeah, okay. You can't keep doing the same thing. It does stifle, and you asked me last meeting about some information on economic development, I will share that with you, I do have it. It does stifle economic development. People do come into areas when they feel like it's being done properly, fairly, and that's something, that's why we need to do it. Again, it's, it's, in my opinion, and you ran, you were opposed to it, and I ran, and I was in favor of it. There were, there were these platforms that I ran on. I am in favor of it, I think it's important that we do it, I think it's necessary for us to be the only county in Pennsylvania that hasn't done it in 50 years, I think puts, puts us in bad light in many, many companies and many, many people's eyes. I am in favor of it, I don't want to get into that reassessment conversation now either, but that's it. But against a city council, I've, I've got to tell you, Commissioner, I've never watched it. I don't. And. I don't, and I don't read about that much.
All you hear is about, you know.
And I don't think, I don't think it's an anti-woman thing. I really don't.
It's so ridiculous.
All right, excuse me.
Ms. Jaeger, I'll make sure that you speak to Mr. Foley afterwards, and he'll try to accommodate any of your needs. Mr. Foley, see what the situation was with Ms. Jaeger, what her situation with her property. A lot of the questions, a lot.
I'm not against paying taxes. I am very willing to pay my fair share. I just would like equality. That's it. I, you know, if you want me to pay what you assess me at, go raise everybody else's. That's fine, but make them equal.
So, Mr. Foley, get with Ms. Jaeger after the meeting. Most of the questions that were actually answered by Lorraine, the 15-man smoke breaks, the HUP tax or something, tell me about that, Mr. Foley. Is that something that we, how does that work? What do they do? They put their 501(c)(3) in, they apply to be, they're nonprofits, so they'd be tax-free? Do we have an actual listing? I'm assuming there's definitely a listing of them.
We do have records on them, and what they do is they apply to the IRS and Department of Revenue, and they get a form called a 501(c)(3), and that makes them tax-exempt. And as Maureen pointed out, then, they must, every five years, they must be recertified.
So, they have to reapply, basically?
Yes. So, that's the procedure. We do not have control over that.
That's a state situation.
And they get a certificate, and they send us a letter. It's like a veteran's exemption. You know, they go through the state veteran's exemption, and they send us a letter, and then we have to follow their dictation.
You know, Mr. Foley, when you come up to the podium, because I want everybody to hear that, come up to the podium for one second. I didn't want to make this meeting long, but explain that really quick, because it sounds to me, in other words, we're just basically told who's 501(c)(3). We're told. So, we have really no control.
The owner of the property would apply. The owner of the property would apply to the IRS or Department of Revenue for a 501(c)(3) certificate. They would have to fill a form out. They have to fill out their financial information. They fill out the reason why they feel. As Maureen mentioned, there's what they call a HUP test, and that has been, over the years, really not, how can I say, not really followed here in Lackawanna County for 50 years. The classic case on it was, was the SARE was challenged years ago, the SARE Hospital, as to whether they were qualified under the HUP test, and they lost in the court battle or specifically. I'm sure the counselors could pick those out. But that was the classic case, and they had to pay some taxes on it. It's always been a question that, with some of the exempt status properties that are used for some of the parts of the building, are used for maybe catering operations or private operations that they have, they've leased out, and Lackawanna County, way before my time, has never challenged, and I have been an advocate over the years that we should challenge them, but that's above my pay grade.
Okay, well, I think, I think we'll have to sit down and have a meeting about this.
Yes.
Okay, we'll set that up. Donnie, set a meeting up with Mr. Foley.
I will, Commissioner, but it's also important to point out that it's not just the county that can challenge this. Also, municipalities and school districts can also challenge.
Yeah, it's not just us.
If a municipality has an issue with a nonprofit in their town that they feel partially should be or is not tax-exempt, they have a right to bring that challenge to the Board of Assessment, just as anyone else.
No, no, I understand that all government bodies has that option, but Mr. Foley seems to have some things that he's, that are at the top of his head that maybe we should be looking into, so.
Yeah, I think what solicitor is saying is, it's called a reverse appeal. And the Mid Valley, the Scranton School District, and the Riverside School District have joined in on these reverse appeals. We have 87 of those reverse appeals now where they're challenging to get the appeals raised. They feel that they're under assessed. That case, as I understand right now, it has been before the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. We're waiting for a decision before it gets pursued a little further. Hopefully, that decision, as I understand, may be in the next two to three weeks, hopefully. And at that point, we will go ahead on that reverse appeal, and we will challenge them. And I will tell you at this point that it will be, you know, an expense that the county will have to burden, because it will be appraisals and legal work and everything else that will be involved in it. But there's an attorney out of Wilkes-Barre that is representing and taking these reverse appeals, and we're just waiting to hear what the Supreme Court has to say, whether it's legal or not legal.
I don't think, I don't think Donnie was referring to reverse appeals.
Oh, okay.
He was referring to challenging the nonprofits and indicating to the local governments, because I know in the 90s, the school districts challenged the hospitals, Allied, and the University of Scranton. So, his point was, for instance, the city of Scranton or the Scranton School District likewise can challenge nonprofit designation for tax-free status.
That is correct.
In the county.
Yes.
As can any municipality up and down the line.
Right.
And where do they challenge them? Where do they do the challenge at?
Send them a letter.
Board of Assessors? John, has anyone ever, ever challenged that? Any of the, anyone ever challenged?
The only ones that we have right now are the 87 cases that we have on the reverse appeals. No, nobody has ever really challenged the exempt status on it, that I'm aware of.
Except, in the 90s, the Scranton School District, they challenged Allied, they challenged the three hospitals, and they challenged the University of Scranton. And as a result of that, there was some settlements for payments in lieu of taxes. So, there were challenges, and those actually went to court before they were settled. So, there have been challenges of nonprofit institutions.
But it's outside of this government. It was the school district itself.
Yeah, we have a case before us now with one of the subsidiaries, which, or not a subsidiary, but it was the sale of Allied on Smallcomb Drive, which is the two buildings up there. And without getting into the details, at this point, I would have all intentions of sitting with you or.
I think, John, I talked a little bit about, there's a significant number of nonprofits, and I would say John had some concerns, and we did have some discussions. If you can sort of put something together of the ones you think are a concern, because there's hundreds and hundreds of nonprofits.
Oh, yeah.
Churches, schools, there's.
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight percent of the city tax base, probably, at this point, is on exempt status. And I think, as Maureen mentioned, we get situations where they file with the Department or the IRS, and they form a church group, non-denominational church group, and they get a 501(c)(3), and we're required at that point to put them on the exempt status. Now, as to whether they would go further and meet the HUP test, which are the five different items in the HUP test that they would have to meet, that's the point where we would have to challenge them on it.
Right, right.
Yes.
But I guess the question is, for your status, would you have some inkling of those? Because, I mean, personally, I don't think a county can go out and challenge everything. I mean, you've got to have some reason.
We have a list which, I believe, was provided a couple of months ago to the Chief of Staff when he asked, as to the exempt, and we could just call that list and go over and look at it and see what's there.
But, Mr. Foley, also, the school district could do it, council could do that.
Council can do it.
They could all do it.
The city can do it, yeah, the city of Scranton could.
Supervisors and the outskirts, if they wanted, if there was a nonprofit out that way, they could probably challenge in their area.
It would be up to, I'm not a lawyer, and I would defer to the legal experts here, but I know that the school districts themselves can bring the challenge, and the boroughs or the townships can bring the challenge.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Foley.
That would be up to them.
Okay, our building, I really didn't get a chance to talk to the Chief of Staff about this, but I know that we've had some individuals tour the building, some inquiries, people inquired. I'm not sure exactly where the status is at that point, but like we've talked about since the inception of the buying of the Globe, the Globe Environmental Center, this building, which no one else in other governments really worry about, we're going to make sure that it goes back on the tax roll, and if everything goes right, it will be sold way before we vacate the building. So, that's, we have a couple of situations that go along with the fact of selling the building. They could just buy our building. They'd have to buy the building with the options of us being here until the day that we vacate it. So, there's a couple of nuances that go with it, so, but that's what's going on right now. And we have had some people inquire, and we've had some tours, so we'll let you know. I'd just like to bring up that the 3rd of July fireworks display, the Scranton Spatastic, was incredible down at the courthouse. The Philharmonic came out. It was really nice. I think everybody was down there, enjoyed the night. There were thousands of people that came down with their families, and it was just a great night. We also have our 3-on-3 basketball tournament that we've had for, that's our annual event. That's going to be July 28th to 30th, and that's, if you would like to be involved in the 3-on-3, call Lackawanna County Community Relations at 570-963-6743. And I think it's from third grade up, Ramishter Roadway, third grade up for teams. Also, we're going to be having our Family Fun Days, and the next one coming up is going to be at Merle Sinowski Park. That's July 15th. Covington Park is July 22nd, and Ellsworth is August 5th, and they're 11 to 2 p.m., so make sure if you're in the Upper Valley, or if you're up at Ellsworth, or up in the North Pocono area, make sure you come out for Family Fun Day. It's a great day for everybody to come out and enjoy it. It's all free. And our Arts in the Park, we're going to be having the Arts in the Park, July 11th at Merle Sinowski Park, Carbondale, July 18th, Covington Park in Covington Township, and July 25th, Ellsworth Park in German. And August 1st, we'll be at McDade Park, and they're 10 to 12 noon. Great opportunity for the families to come out, enjoy arts in our parks. And last but absolutely not least, please, if you have an opportunity, this has always been like, sometimes people would think, oh, it's a family secret. Well, you know what? It's out, it's in the light. People are dying from overdoses, and please come out. This annual event is the second annual, and it's to remember, it's a memory of Sammy Heenanhan, and it's Sunday, July 16th, 2017, 3 to 7 p.m., Lackawanna County Courthouse. Please come out. We're going to have numerous vendors there. Last time, we actually had an addict that walked up, and one of the counselors actually got him into rehab within hours of actually coming to the event down at the courthouse. So, please, come on out, shed the light. If you have any family, or friends that have issues, please come down. We're going to have numerous vendors, and there'll be lots of people there that will want to talk about it, because they're all on the same page, and they understand what addiction's about. So, please come out, and come out to the Addiction Awareness Rally. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.